Gentlemen, and welcome to the May 19, 2004 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Bedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Please stand for invocation.
I'll be thanking you for another City Council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for all of us. Thank you for our city. We bring the police department, fire department, we bring the hospitals, we bring the schools. For if our city as a whole, every one of our citizens, will all be one, do the best we can to make this a good city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no mayor's comments. There are no, there is no one signed up for audience time, agenda items only. The minutes, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve the minutes of May 5, 2014, regular meeting, and the executive session minutes and special meeting minutes from May 12, 2014. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passes. Resolution, closing the Amstutz for the April 3 Annual Bike in Amstutz Event. Do you have that? A third annual, I don't know the date. Do you have the date on there?
Saturday, June 7.
June 7. Okay, a motion to accept the resolution by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Bedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
A vote aye, Mayor, is that June 7, from what time to what time?
The time's on there.
So the public will know.
Yes, it's from 4 to 6.
4 to 6.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Committee, meaning Committee Report, Finance Committee, Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met this evening at 5 o'clock. The, two things on the agenda, the first one was authorizing the proper city officials to execute a second amendment to a business development agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and Rosen Motor Sales as presented, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, do you want me to explain what it is for a second, so the people not on the Finance Committee?
Yes, go ahead.
Quickly, sir, what it is, is that Rosen Motors had a 10-year agreement with the City of Waukegan after they did a million-dollar restoration on the building and their business, and we worked something out with the sales tax revenue for the last 10 years, and they have not recouped their money back. They came to the City of Waukegan asking us to prolong, or excuse me, to extend the agreement, and we are for the next 15 years.
Thank you.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
An extra 15, or?
Fifteen.
It's 10-year agreement now.
Correct.
But they want another 15 years?
Yes.
Another five?
Another, no, another.
Fifteen.
It's 15.
Another 15, I believe.
Okay, continue with the roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
A vote aye, but, you know, these are tough times, we need our sales tax, no question about it, but for another 15 years? A vote aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
A better explanation, and not in deference to the Chairman, I know he was just going there, but I...
Do you want to do that, please?
Do you want to explain?
A little better explanation, okay, I'm just going through it. No, I shouldn't say better, more detail, right, Mr. Chairman, that's all, that's what I'm asking.
As I said before, 10 years ago, they remodeled their building, they spent over a million dollars. We had an agreement with them for 10 years. The split was 75 percent to the city, 25 percent, on the sales tax, excuse me. 75 percent to the city, 25 percent to the business, correct so far, Tina?
No, no.
Reversed?
Yeah, we got the first eight, we got the first 80...
No, no, 75, 25 percent on the split. Then, anything, we kept the first $80,000 of that, all right? There's an $80,000, and anything over $80,000, they were able to recoup their money. Over the 10 years, the life of the agreement, the 10 years, they have only recouped $26,000. So Sal Rosen, the owner, came to the city and asked us to extend the agreement where the city would get 75 percent, the same 75 percent, they would get the full 25 percent instead of the $80,000 cap, and then their 25 percent. And after the period of 10 or 12 years, they should be able to recoup their money. Tina, you want to come up for a second, please? Thank you, ma'am.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
He's okay with it.
He's all right, he's all right.
Are you all right?
Okay, I'm good, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My vote is aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
And also, understand this, this was arranged through myself, Tina, and John Antoranian, and we also now are negotiating with Kia and Classic for the same, for the same deal. Those two businesses have been in Waukegan for almost 30 years, and they've been loyal to our community. They need help, and we're going to help them, if we can. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, one last thing, Alderman Cunningham, I failed to mention this, sir, they signed an agreement to stay here another 15 years, okay? Second item, authorizing the proper city officials to execute an agreement for accounting services by and between the City of Waukegan and accounting principles for an amount not to exceed $75,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Labor Relations, that was me. Adopt Ordinance, Amending Ordinance, 12, old 35, and Ordinance Fixing the Salaries and Wages to be Paid to Management and Non-Management Union Employees of the City of Waukegan, Illinois, effective May 1, 2014. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Rivera, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, extend the current, let me see this one. Request to extend the current mosquito abatement contract. Motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to extend the current mosquito abatement contract to Clark Environmental for an amount not to exceed $64,000. Funds are available, line item 10910624425, and I mention that's the same price for the last three years, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Alderman Bedling.
What exactly does this stuff kill anybody? Own mosquitoes? How do they design something like that? Anybody?
I don't know.
I'm a very greedy person, I, I kind of make this a maniac, I think it's awful at nighttime. Run, fight, once again. Hiding in some of these bushes, if you get eaten by a mosquito, I don't know what we have to do, but... You want to go out, put some EAT on you or something, oh, that's bad, that's right, so eat whatever the mosquito could come in. Come on, what are we killing here? You don't see grasshoppers, crickets anymore. I don't even see butterflies anymore. I wonder exactly how many insects this stuff kills?
Hard on bees.
I remember growing up, used to see my own butterflies, all kinds of bugs, birds, snakes, everything's gone.
Roll call, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B. Request to purchase road striping paint. Motion recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to purchase our road striping paint for the 2014-15 fiscal year from Enos Flint Paint of Enos, Texas, for an amount not to exceed $14,947. Funds are available, line item 10911025476, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Thank you, item C. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to execute a three-year contract with AEP Energy of Chicago, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed .052780 cents per kilowatt on peak cost, and .037030 cents per kilowatt off-peak cost. Funds are available, line item 555-915724426. This should be, we hope to be, about a savings of $75,000 a year, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
How exactly does this work?
What's that, Alderman?
How does it work? How do they save money?
It's less, it's a less, less per energy, I'm assuming, unless, yeah, delivered.
You have a middleman in the mix, and you save money, and another?
No, I, I don't, I don't, no, that's all right? Nothing wrong with that?
Thank you.
Hmm? Where are we in here?
Roll call.
Okay.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item D, a little strange for our committee, but we'll take it. Motion to recommend the City Council authorize the proper city officials to amend Chapter 21, Section 21-122, limited parking, two-hour limit, and Chapter 21, Section 21, 119, all-night parking for Sheridan Road, West Side, between Water Street and Hazel Court, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
And that's it for Public Works, Your Honor.
Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham.
Insurance Committee met roughly 6:30. Here it is, authorize the proper city officials to settle Public Works Department liability claim, claim number VA2013937405, for an amount not to exceed $15,000, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Bedling, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Lakefront Beach Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, the committee met this evening, and I'd like to make the motion to authorize the sale of five city stickers to the Waukegan Port District to be used for beach entries. Stickers will be registered to the Port Authority, and the Port Authority will be tracking usage. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bedling, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Under new, under new business, item A, approval payroll dated May 16.
Mayor, point of order.
Excuse me, go ahead, Alderman Valco.
We missed old business?
Oh, I'm sorry, anyone, any old business?
I, thank you, because I do have something, I'm sorry, but thank you. Last council meeting, we voted on a one-half percent increase in the sales tax, and it was defeated, even though this increase was earmarked to pay back a $12 million bond that was to pay for roadwork. Since I voted in the majority, I am making a motion to reconsider the issue, and I will then bring forward an amendment, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, is there a second to, a second by Alderman Cunningham? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Would this tax apply to vehicle sales this month?
No. Tina, that applies to all, all sales, correct?
No.
Not auto? Okay, not auto.
And not food, either.
Not food.
And no auto, no food?
What was the motion again, I'm just, this was to reconsider?
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
Bring it back up for reconsidering, and if it passes, I'll give a motion for it.
Motion to reconsider. Just a motion to reconsider, that's it.
To reconsider, motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider, yes, sir.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
To reconsider, aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Okay, it's back on the floor, Alderman Valco, make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The last two weeks, I've had several calls from residents of the 8th Ward as to why it is taking so long to get the streets repaired. Most are understanding when the facts are addressed, but enough is enough. As some of the aldermen on this day, as I stated, the city needs $40 million to repair the roads. My ward, the 8th, needs $8 million alone. The roads in Tewas Farms, Heather Heights, and Castle Crest are in need of immediate repair. Last year, we allocated $1 million for roadwork. Two years ago, nothing. The citizens of every ward deserve better and should demand more. I have been working with the Finance Director, and the new proposal was placed in the aldermanic packets this evening for your viewing. I know a lot of citizens did not want an increase in the sales tax, but here we have a unique opportunity from a constant source of revenue to help pay for the roads. Some of the things in life we may tend to regret are the risks that we didn't take. So I would like to take a risk this evening and amend the failed ornaments, ordinance, excuse me, which reads, "An ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, taxation to increase the home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and the home rule municipal service occupation tax from a half a percent increase in the sales tax to one-quarter of a percent. This would allow us to go off for bonds, excuse me, of approximately $6 million instead of the $12 million initially proposed, and I so move."
Motion by Alderman Valco, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Second by Alderman Tempest. Okay, the motion now is to have the sales tax at one-quarter percent as opposed to one-half percent?
An increase, Mayor.
An increase.
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor.
Your Honor, go ahead, Alderman.
I understand, I've talked to Alderman Valco about this, and we're both, everybody up here, I guess, is trying to find ways to do it. The thing that I'm torn with is it's going to cost us $40 million, if we can get to $20 million, we might get a dent in the road, but, but $6 million, it just, it doesn't seem like that's going to get us anywhere, and it doesn't hurt us more than it helps us. I don't know, I am so torn on this issue, so torn as to what, you know, what to do. I mean, $40 million, and you do the math, they're going to get $6 million, I mean, that's, I don't know, is that just going to fill pot holes? I don't know, I'm, I mean, I'm really torn on it, really torn on what to do. I mean, I know you brought, we asked you, and you brought us the 1.5, and that didn't go over well, and, you know, then you hurt the businesses too much, and, you know, it doesn't equate to a lot of money for, you know, Tina said it's not, it's not for food, Tina, it wouldn't be for food, or anything like that, you know?
Home sales tax doesn't apply to any entitled, like car or road.
Okay.
It doesn't apply to food, like groceries.
But... But like, you know, McDonald's, or, you know, Target. General merchandise, stuff like that, I mean, I don't think any of us would actually even notice the difference. Really, if you went to Target, or you went to Jewel, or you went to somewhere like that, I don't know you'd even notice the difference on your bill. But I, I just don't know if $6 million gets us anywhere, if it was, we don't notice when we, we pay a little extra at the store, and we don't notice that we're getting any roads done. Where, where are we? I don't know, I'm looking for, I'm looking for some help here.
Mayor? Let me, let me make a statement first, please. When we started discussing initially the necessity to work on our infrastructure, you asked me and Tina to find a continual source of income that we could attach to the bond debt. Tina and I discussed it, we came to the realization, the only way to do this would be a sales tax. We brought that to council, the council didn't want that to pass, so we left it there. If we are truly to do any infrastructure work, we have to have a continual yearly source of income to pay down the debt service. Although this is only a quarter percent, this would impact that debt service. So please consider that, obviously, you know me, I don't, I'm not twisting anyone's arm here, but we need to have a continual source of revenue to pay down the debt on the bonds. I'm sorry, next, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I would, I would have considered it, but we just raised property taxes a little while ago, and when it was mentioned that the businesses, you know, we wouldn't take notice, the businesses definitely would take notice of this. You know, we would be the highest sales tax community in Lake County. Am I correct to say that, Tina? Well, I'm quite sure we would be the highest. So, would it affect business? Would it affect all the small and pop businesses, too, that have been in this community for a long time? Absolutely, because you know what? They'll just go to the next town, cross the Wisconsin border, so yeah, this would definitely affect, you know, the community, no question about it. Yes, and Alderman Valco, I commend him, because he did communicate with us in regards to this motion that he wanted to bring up, but, you know, I must say, out of, out of respect, I appreciate it, but I'm sorry, I'm going to have to say no to this, because I know it's going to do more harm than good.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you, Your Honor. I voted against a half percent sales tax. I want to commend the aldermen for doing some research and trying to figure out how we can get through this. The roads are, yeah, we need a lot, lot, but you know, a quarter percent, I think that's a compromise, and the longer you're up here, you learn to compromise, and I'm going to compromise this evening and go with a quarter percent. The reason being, we've got to make a start, even if it's a small start, it's a start, and the way our roads are, cars keep getting better gas mileage, so we don't get as much gas taxes we used to get, and we've got to come up. Also, I would suggest, Your Honor, and I'm not going to be very popular, but why would I get a vehicle sticker for $5? I'm a senior citizen, and my vehicle sticker, I believe I get it for $5. I could see maybe half-price, but $5, we need to look at at least a senior citizen paying for half of it, not for $5. Not popular, I know, but if I can afford to drive a car, I ought to be able to afford a half-price vehicle sticker, and I think this body should take a look at what we're paying for vehicle stickers, especially senior citizens, and boy, I'm not going to be very popular, I guess, but $5, it hardly pays you, the clerk mailing it to you, and the money you send in, and the time going around, for $5. I, we have to look for more sources, and I think the aldermen came up with a good compromise here, a quarter percent, I think that make some improvement in our roads, it's worthwhile, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Your Honor, one more question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It seems like the problem is the cost of government is very expensive, getting more expensive, while the private sector, wages and benefits are stagnant. I don't know what to do, I don't like borrowing money, I think we pay $20,000 a year, principal and interest on our debt. I don't really want to get that. And it seems it's our community, not someone else's community, I think we're responsible for our reconstruction here, pay for it ourselves. Two years ago, once again, I wish we would have levied, we'd be two years into a road repaid program today. We're looking pretty good, and people are feeling much better about our community. I have a tough time raising these taxes, because Alderman Rivera pointed out, right there, maybe wrongly, they're smoking a few way up there in sales tax, before the things like that, where you move into a community. You know, when you look at the condition of the community, what does it look like? Trash laying around, the garbage cans go over the top. It seemed like we were a lot better off way back when, we were a community of $65,000, and we had some industry there. But the one I have got in the community today, it just, it doesn't pay the bills, so the money has to come from a new one source, and that would be out of the property office, which I am one, and I pay the property tax bills. But I'd rather pay an extra couple hundred dollars a year if our roads remain in good condition, rather than if my car gets suspension repairs all the time. So I think, whatever you want to do with this tax, I think next year, we better make the commitment to raising the levy, whatever that is, to have a road repaid. Until it's completed, and then we can back it off. This is what our main function is, public infrastructure, public safety, and maintaining community standards. Government gets off in these little, want to be all things to all people, programs, grants, blah, 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 all of your own, that all adds up to a day of growth, states grow, federal governments grow. It's going to be made in at some point, but it won't be anything like that. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Thank you, Alderman Moiseo.
Tina, if we do this, and we go out, and we borrow $6 million, when can we go borrow another $6 million? Yeah, can you, I mean...
Tina, come up, Tina, would you come to the mic, please?
What?
The $6 million is based on coverage for 20 years, so we had to cover, one, I worked on the projections for Alderman Valco, I looked at debt service, and also assumed an extra 50% over the debt service would come in. I did assume no growth, to be conservative.
Okay.
So, you know, for the first four years, I wouldn't, this, the way the state statute works, even if you pass this tonight, the state will not levy this new tax until January.
Right.
Which means we won't get the collections till March.
Right.
So, the first year, we'll be catching up on debt service anyway. It'll probably take four to five years before we'll have any funding above the debt service and cover, coverage requirement.
So, we get the $6 million, be able to fix some roads, but then we gotta wait?
For, for this particular revenue stream, correct. But the city may be able to identify other mechanisms for funding road improvements other than the home roll sales tax in that time.
The other thing you, we had talked about was a combination of a revenue bond and a...
Geo bond.
...property tax bond. Um, would that still be possible if we passed this tonight? We could, we could dovetail that together or is that once, is that not possible?
At, the, it, it's up to the council. Um, because we're home roll, you can, there's not a limitation on your property, your property tax levy.
Yeah.
So, we could do a general obligation bond along with this revenue bond. Um, so if the, in fact, we might have to do it that way anyway, um, in order to be able to sell the bonds. If the revenue, the revenues identified, which would be home roll sales tax, were not sufficient, a property tax levy would automatically kick in to provide sufficient coverage. Having that additional pledge usually results in a lower interest rate on the bonds when you borrow them. So, that would be something that if this passes tonight, we would bring both of those scenarios to city council to consider.
Because the bondholders wanna get paid and they wanna know how they're gonna get paid.
They always get paid, yes.
Either by the revenue or by taxes, they're gonna get paid.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Your Honor?
So, Alderman Kane?
I'm glad you're staying, uh, stay there for a second, please.
Thank you.
A, a, a pay-as-you-go approach. I know it ha, it has not been floated at all, but a pay-as-you-go, what would the half percent, and I'm going out on a stretch, even the quarter, uh, that quarter percent, what type of revenue would that bring in for us on an annual basis?
Between $400,000 and $500,000?
The half percent?
Mm-hmm. Well, um, the quarter percent.
Quarter percent.
Correct.
And the half of the percent, I'm assuming, close to a mil?
Assuming that sales would be consistent with our existing sales.
Okay.
Correct.
So, we're looking at $500,000, which probably wouldn't do anything from a road program standpoint. All right. Uh, okay. Now, with that being said, uh, I too, uh, uh, agree with Alderman Tempest and, and I, I really sympathize with Alderman Moizio when it says, hey, what will a $6 million do to our crumbling infrastructure, particularly our roads? Um, and if we're gonna talk about our roads, I know Mr. Hagerty, one of his pet peeves is you must look underground before you become above ground. So, that's just something we have to consider as we start going through and doing our roads. The underground must be fixed first. I hope we all understand that.
Yep.
And then we come back and, uh, you know, pay it over. We can't do what we kinda did to, uh, Belvedere at its long-term neglect, but hey, we got something. So, with that being said, I, 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 I agree, I maybe, maybe just kick this, to kick this baby off, and I'm saying baby, uh, out of respect of, of what it is, our baby, meaning the city, maybe we can initially kick off a $6 million. Um, I guess I would be more inclined to say, how can we continue to pay as we go after the kickoff? I would love to have 12 million, I won't deny that. If we had enough votes up here to get a half percent in order to get that 12 million to kick it off, uh, I would be a yes vote, be clear. But to kick off a $6 million, how can we generate more revenue to do a pay-as-you-go once we kick off that $6 million? And that then goes to Alderman Moizio's point.
Tina? Excuse me, Alderman. Tina, unless I'm mistaken, we have a bond money of about $4 million from the water fund, is that correct? That has to be utilized very soon?
Uh, correct, from a water sewer bond from 2012.
Correct. The money's not been spent, it's sitting idle in an account?
Uh, one-third of that has been expended. It's been 18 months since that issuance, however, those bond documents specifically called out specific projects. Um, so that is a question that I have pending with legal counsel right now.
Yeah. So, if we don't use that money, we lose that money, correct?
We do not lose the money. Um, we would have to perform what's called an arbitrage rebate calculation to determine the tax status of the underlying bonds.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, as you're saying, Mayor, we potentially, might, we potentially...
We potentially have...
Might have, might have a $4 million, so...
We potentially have $4 million to work on the sewers, um, and, and below the roads.
Below ground, so that's, that's good. I, I, I wanna, I wanna get back to Alderman Valco's point. The half a percent is, is great. I think it'd be an excellent start, but if we kick this off with a $6 million bond, I'm gonna be more interested now that because we're not going with 12 million, how can we do a pay-as-you-go along? I know Tom has already allocated X amount of dollars. With a four-quarter percent, we'll have another 400. And I'm thinking that we, you, being pretty creative with your financing, moving, maneuvering, we can probably do two, maybe 2.5 million to, after we've kicked off a $6 million. Now, we're on a good path of the next five, five years of making some significant progress with our infrastructure, particularly our roads and our sidewalks. Is that a possibility?
Those, those kinds of scenarios would be something that we could review in the budget process and something that Alderman Valco and I have talked about is doing more long-term financial planning as part of the finance committee. So, that would definitely be something, if the finance chair is comfortable with that, that we could look at at the committee level.
Okay. Well, I, I, and I'll, I'll say this with closing on this issue. I'm gonna vote yes with the, with the chairman, but I'm hoping that we can go with the full half a percent, a quarter percent, so we can really move forward with what we know of what we know needs to be done in the city of Waukegan. We know what it has to be done. To Greg's point, and I'm, I apologize, to Alderman Moizio's point, we can start it off, but are we really doing the justice that we need for the infrastructure of this city? It is a hard decision, but we need to make it now and move on with it.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman Beedling?
I, I think with it, I'd be looking for a commitment out of my colleagues up here that, and I commend the mayor once again for not taking water enterprise funds and putting it in a general, balanced budget for the first time in many years. And that's the problem that communities run into and that kinda hides the true cost of government. Take it out of this fund, obviously employees, this or that, motor fuel taxes, 2.4 million dollars. You know, if you wanna buy salt with it, fine. I prefer not even buy salt with it. I think the employees, they pay. Commodities, electric bills, everything else, you can make a commitment, do that 2.4 million dollars, whatever we collect every year in motor fuel tax, that would be dedicated to roads. I mean, that's water enterprise fund, let's fix our water infrastructure and our storm sewers, in sanitary sewers as well. Motor fuel tax, two and a half million dollars a year roughly, that's not a bad road repaid program. I think we've been doing that all along, I don't know if we can even find ourselves in this situation, but, uh, that's the kinda commitment I would like, she is a taxpayer in this community, is that we make these funds safer, they absolutely have to use for anything other than what they're supposed to be used for.
Mayor, I just have one more. Alderman?
You know, uh, tonight, we, uh, did an agreement with our dealers, one of the dealers in Tom Rosen, you know, of not collecting sales tax for another, next 15 years. What are we gonna lose there? How much sales tax potentially we're gonna lose there? Now, the other dealer is coming to us asking for the same deal.
Alderman, they've had, they've had the deal, we're just continuing...
Well, you're, we're extending the deal.
We're extending it.
Exactly. And I know why, because...
With the promise that they're gonna stay in the city.
But I just don't get it, why, you know, here we are, going after all of our businesses and asking them, hey, let's raise your, uh, you know, let's raise your sales tax and then we're giving these dealers, you know, the breaks. Aren't we losing money there? We're losing a lot of money there in sales tax. I just don't understand, you know, our thinking, you know, so, uh, I just think that we've gone to our businesses, we've gone to the citizens in this community, too much. And I know we need our infrastructure, uh, done, and I'd mentioned before, there's revenue out there. There's revenue out there to be collected and you're in a process of, of doing that by putting our city collector to take the lead on there. You know, there's a lot of money out there that's, that's out there that needs to be collected, but, you know, I just don't understand, we're giving the, uh, the dealers a break and I understand, gotta keep them in town, but then we're asking all the rest of the businesses in this community, hey, let's raise your, your, your sales tax another quarter percent. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. A roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
No.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
I feel, I really wanna pass. Don't feel any pressure, Larry.
Before I vote, I wanna comment. I personally would not like to see more bonded indebtedness. I'd rather see the $400,000 to $500,000 spent each year. I am concerned about our indebtedness. Uh, I made a commitment that I would support the, the Alderman who went to extreme effort in trying to find a solution to get some money for the roads, a quarter percent. Is this taxed on forever and ever? Is like this my, I need to ask.
That's, that's up to the Alderman, I suspect, that it's, it will pay the debt service and that's what we intended, the intent of this is to have a sustainable debt service, a way to pay down the debt service. This will give us that opportunity.
I will, I will vote aye, Your Honor, but I would rather not see a bond that should be created, I'd rather see the extra money coming in each year just be designated for the road program. That way, I have no debt and the money coming in would extend a little more money into the road program. But I'll vote aye.
Thank you. It passes. Um, thank you, Alderman, for the discussion. I, it was, uh, I, I understand the heartfelt emotions that came through tonight and, uh, we will work our best to make this work for the city of Waukegan. Right. Yeah, that was one. Okay, under new business, item A, approval payroll dated May 16th, 2014, in the amount of $1,367,989.52. Six slash vacation payout, $497,570.60. AFSCME uniform allowance, $990. Vacation payout for the fire department, $18,523.33. And final payouts in the amount of $15,431.65. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Approval of bills dated May 19th, 2014, in the amount of $521,370.77. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Right.
Item C, approval of block parties, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Beedling. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any? Okay, 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 um, just a housekeeping error. We now have, the motion was to bring it back on the table for one quarter. We now have to take the vote to accept the motion as presented, uh, to one quarter, amending it to one quarter. So, that's, uh, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. A roll call again, please, madam clerk. This is to approve the one-quarter percent, as amended by Alderman Valco.
Alderman May?
No.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
No.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
No.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
No.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Okay, passed as, as amended. Uh, ordinance and resolutions, item A, ordinance reflecting no left turn intersection at northbound Sheridan Road at its intersection with Traditions Drive. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item B, ordinance reflect no parking anytime on the west side of Martin Luther King Avenue from a .300 and 135 feet south of the curb line of Water Street to a .396 feet south of the curb line of Water Street. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Item C, ordinance reflect that no vehicle shall be operated as a taxi cab that is more than 10 years old. Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moizio?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsome?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
No, I feel that's, old and it's in good shape, it's, and a safety check that should be able to be used.
Okay, thank you. Alderman's time, madam clerk, please.
Alderman May?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna address a couple items. Uh, this evening, we talked about the, we passed a salary ordinance and I just wanted to thank everyone that worked on it. Um, it was tweaked and retweaked and tweaked and I, I appreciate the work was done and some eliminations that were made since our last hearing of it, so thank you, Mayor, on that. Um, on the sales, sales tax increase, I thank you, Alderman Valco, for being creative and working hard to figure out, uh, income stream for our infrastructure, but I still hold my ground, but I, I don't, I think it's, we needed a much bigger idea than this and I, I know it's a kickstart, but I just can't support any more, um, sales tax increases, so that's why I voted no. And then on a brighter note, I just wanna mention a couple of events that are gonna kick off the summer, June 7th. I think we'll finally be able to call it summer by June 7th. In the 7th Ward, the Dandelion Wine Festival at Bowen Park is on June 7th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. If you haven't been, or if you haven't been to Bowen Park, this is a great opportunity to come see this gem in the 7th Ward. After the Dandelion Wine Festival is the Bike the Amstutz that we approved tonight, that goes from 4:00 to 6:00. And then at 7 o'clock, the Summer Saturday Concert Series kicks off at Starnes Pavilion at our beautiful lakefront at seven p.m. So, let's just consider June seventh our kickoff for summer. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Falco.
Thank you. A couple of months ago, I read in the New Sun in the Talk of the Town, Talk of the County, excuse me, that the mayor should give back part of his salary because he also gets a police pension and he also gets a park district pension. Well, the mayor does not get a park district pension. He worked for free for the park district and he also worked for free for years in the Waukegan Housing Authority. I picked up the New Sun today. I reread the New Sun today, excuse me. It's Friday's New Sun in the Talk of the County and it's labeled, "Visit to a Sister City." Waukegan is visiting Japan. Who goes to our sister city on our dime? The mayor, the mayor's secretary, and the commissioner. What is the benefit? Or is it simply just another political waste of money? My comment to this anonymous caller is get your... I was going to say damn, but I'm not going to say it. Get your facts straight, okay? First off, these are Aldermen up here. They're not commissioners. How dare you even say the mayor's taking his secretary with him? Kind of individual are you? You're talking about anonymous. Why don't you call in some more and make up stuff about everybody else? Mr. Moran, I see you're here, sir, and you've got nothing to do with this, but make it like your letters to the editor. At the end of the letters of the editor, you have to put your name in, at least the city that you're in. Make the phone call, Bill Falco, City of Waukegan. And you're going to see a whole bunch of this stuff stop. You can't... It just upsets me to no end how this... When I was a policeman for thirty-five years, I got my share of garbage, but I never, ever thought I'd be saying the garbage that comes out of some of these people's mouths nowadays just to start trouble for no reason. And whoever that is, put an anonymous apology in there because get your darn straight... Excuse me. Get your darn facts straight first before you accuse the mayor of taking his secretary to Japan and a commissioner on the city dime. I know for a fact, because I was there, that the mayor paid for out of his own check his trip to Japan, the airfare for David Motley to go on his dime, not the city's dime, and also bought several gifts for the individuals over there in Japan, our sister city, and in Tokyo. So, please, please get your facts straight because it upsets me to no end. That's all I have, sir.
Bill, let me clarify that. They asked me to come to Japan because they're our sister city. I wanted to go to Japan because I had hosted several students from Japan in my home over the last twelve years. So, I knew the city was in dire straits financially, so I took it upon myself to pay my way a hundred percent, my son's way a hundred percent, and I bought all the gifts as of today for the dignitaries in Tokyo. Out of my pocket is seventy-two hundred dollars. The city paid not one dime of that. So, I want that anonymous person to understand, please get your facts straight before you start berating me and my son and the city of Waukegan.
Alderman Rivera.
I'm going to pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
You know, tonight, I did, I wanted to pass, but there was a question that was brought to me earlier this week and it has something to do with sagging pants on our young men and some of our young ladies. And the question was asked, why doesn't council do anything about it? And I know this is a very sensitive subject and only because... And then let me step back. The person who asked me, they were Caucasian and they had asked me that maybe you should bring it up because a lot of the young men, and I called them young men because that's who they are, young men. A lot of the young men are African Americans. And I politely told them that, you know, it doesn't matter if he's a black kid or a white kid or Hispanic kid. If it's wrong, it's wrong. If you don't like something, then, you know, you've lost your opinion on it. I too struggle with our young men who wear their pants. I think we should correct something. There is a saggy pants. My grandfather used to wear saggy pants. His pants were saggy, you know? For whatever reason, they were saggy. There's a difference between a saggy pants than a pants below your butt. Let's be clear on that. There's a big difference. Young men, I don't think, should show their underwear when they walk. I just don't believe in that. And I don't believe in it for one, from an appearance standpoint, I don't think it's right. Obviously, I have two young daughters and I can tell you this, and I say this all the time when I speak to young... To students, if a young man approaches my two girls and his pants below his butt, brother, you're not getting in, period. That's just, it is what it is. But I don't think that this pants below your butt is a black thing. I think it's a young person's thing. And I think that we need to really help our young people better understand what it cannot do for you. And I want to give you an example, and I don't want to belabor this, but it's such an important message for our young people to understand because when you go to a job interview and you go see the mayor or Tom Harrigetti or Tina or you go back and see Ezell, the first thing they're going to look at, whether you like it or not, is your appearance. It is what it is. You dress to impress. That's what I've always been told. You come in with your butt showing and can't walk, slouching over, it is an appearance that first grabs people. Second, I personally just don't want to see your blue, black, white underwear. Don't want to do it. Is it necessary for a body of such as ours to govern a person how they're going to wear their clothes? I don't think so. I think we have more important things to be worried about. But this was on this person's mind and I threw the question out to some older African American men, more particularly men, and they were somewhat disgusted that the fact that a lot of our young men, and they obviously said, black boys, and I say boys respectively, but they're young men, that black men, or black young men, did not have their pants pulled or... Let me help... Did not have a belt on their pants. That's what irked them the most. Did not have a belt on their pants. So, I had to struggle with this. How do you present this in a way that we wanted to... The message we want to send is, this is not what you should be wearing. And I'm reading up on this a little bit. My phone ran out and Tom, Alderman, I keep saying, Alderman Conkin gave me his... Allowed me to use his computer to kind of read up on... There are a lot of cities throughout the country are making ordinances and putting curfews on how young boys wear their clothes. And ironically, it is not just black boys anymore. I think it is just a culture, maybe it's the hip-hop culture. I don't know. But sagging pants versus pants below your butt, there's a difference. You know, I think as you get a little older, your little cushion is not as wide or big as it used to be, so your pants don't fit the way they used to be. But the fact of the matter is this, and I'm asking my colleagues on council floor to think about this. Do we need to send or create an ordinance that can dictate how young men wear their I don't want it to be more time consuming on us, but I think for our young men, particularly in Waukegan, and the image that Waukegan already has, I do believe we need to say something and we need to be unified on saying, young men, this is not the way you're going to get that director of public works, mayor of city of Waukegan and Alderman. It's not going to happen that way. You can't go to McDonald's anymore with sagging pants into an interview now. It can't happen. And I don't want this conversation to be lopsided, say it's just black boys who is doing it. I just think it's young boys who are doing it. But we must encourage, if not demand, that you start dressing for success because that is the future that which you have. High school graduation is coming up and I remember Coach Arrington telling me one time, Greg. He said, "All you seniors in here, raise your hand." And this was real football and he said, "This is probably the last time you put on this uniform, a football uniform." Obviously, some of us want us gifted to play in the collegiate, definitely not in the NFL, but when you graduate from high school, there's a decision that must be made. Am I going to college, to the armed forces, or to work? And it was so surreal at that time, but it was the truth. So, I'm telling you and I'm talking to you. Help us to help you. Bring your pants up, if nothing more, put a belt on, man. Because I don't want to see your ugh. And I'm pretty sure everybody in this room doesn't want to see it either. So, I'm telling you, I'm asking you at this point, either you do it or we will. But I truly believe you need to understand the consequences of your not doing it. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. Well, it looks like winter's finally giving up its grip on this area. We're finally getting into the sixties and maybe even the seventies this week before it's all over, seeing some sunshine. I know that people are outside taking care of the lawns a little bit. I see people fertilizing, cutting the grass, trimming hedges. Just want to mention, please take care of your yard waste, do it the correct way, get with a neighbor, split the costs, you know, talk to a friend, put your bags on one driveway. Ten bags is a lot of bags you could get with a neighbor. Split the costs and each year throw five bags out a week. I think that if you do it right, if you hook up with a couple neighbors, you can probably save a little money rather than going out and buying the stickers, but please get rid of your waste correctly and let's keep Waukegan as clean as we can. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moiseo.
I just echo Alderman Cunningham's. Talks about pants below the waistline. It's not just germane to one group. I see it every day at the high school, all kinds of young men that, for whatever reason, it's their fad, it's their style, it's their hip-hop, whatever. I don't know what it is, but, you know, they do it. Like I said, it's not just one group. Constantly talking to kids about pulling their pants up all the time. I don't know if we have a decent exposure ordinance on the books, but maybe it can fall in that category. I don't know. That's something for Chief Wallace maybe to look into or something. I don't know. Or Steve, look into that. I made a mistake on that cab ordinance. I should have voted no on it. I don't know why we picked ten years. I mean, car's twelve, fifteen years, runs fine. Why can't it be a cab? I don't know. I screwed that up. I should have voted no. Wouldn't have made a difference, but I think that's over governance on our part. Somebody wants a cab that's twenty years old and runs fine. It's a cab and it passes the test, then it should be a cab. I screwed that up, but it wouldn't have made a difference, but that's it. Thanks.
Alderman Bedling.
I'd like to mention briefly what Alderman Cunningham spoke about at the last meeting and it kind of falls into being short on money. Carnegie Theater or the Carnegie Library specifically, that library was discussed about back in the late eighties, I believe, early nineties, we're talking about tearing it down. Well, a couple of people in the community got a few more people together and they raised enough ruckus that the city council and mayor at that time backed down. And I think they even gave them fifteen thousand dollars and twenty-some-odd years later, there it sits. We don't have any money to fix that building. Furthermore, I don't believe it's ever going to be fixed. Think about it. We all know where the building is. There's no parking there except Kitty Corner, the southwest corner of Washington and Sheridan. And if that ever gets developed, buy, buy any future parking spaces. We simply don't have the money to do it. You know, I... A cultural center, I mean, what the heck is that? You got to heat and cool the place? We're going to pay somebody to sit inside to do what? We've got to get realistic in this community and learn to say no when we need to say I'm going to beat a dead horse here again. I think our police department especially knows that I love all of them. I really appreciate the job that they do every day, but they have to save themselves. Single employer pension plans statewide, that would be police and fire woefully underfunded. State legislature talks about fixing it. Well, they broke it in the first place. I mean, at some point, you have to save yourself. Sign a contract, commit all that money to go into your pension fund, nothing on the paycheck. And that's patrolmen, sergeants, lieutenants. Shore up your own pension fund, please. Eliminate cost of living until the time comes where you're above a hundred percent funded and that funding is self-sustained by your own investments, not what comes out from the taxpayer portion. That would be common sense to me. Save your pension fund, eliminate cost of living, sign your contract. We really can't, in my opinion, and I'm just speaking my opinion, we can't afford to do the retroactive. Let's get this done. Everybody go back to where... Well, they're working now, but I really appreciate what you guys do. I have a police radio and I listen and I wish most of the public might set you back a hundred dollars or better, but please buy yourself a police scanner and you listen to what's going on in this community, the calls, the nature of the calls. We have a lot of dysfunctional people in this community, unproductive people that the government pays to sit at home. It's the way it sounds to me and they get in fights during the day, call the police, domestic, somebody pokes somebody with a fork or hits somebody with a bat or whatever it is, that's two police officers by state law, number one on the board. So, everything else, unless there's something more serious than that, waits on the board. And anybody who calls the police, your call is very important to you, as when I call the police, it's very important to me, but sometimes it'll sit on the board for fifteen, twenty minutes or more. But we have to start demanding some performance out of everyone in this community, no matter what your economic station in life is. There's no excuse for misbehaving or committing crimes like shoplifting. Shoplifting goes on all day long. Family Dollar, Walmart, they're out at Walmart two, three, four, five times a day or more. Shoplifter in custody, shoplifter in custody. North Chicago used to have a jewel store. You know, they begged for it for many years and gratefully they got one, but they got shoplifted out of existence and I think their own employees had something to do with their eventual demise. And you've got to have respect for your local business community to get your food or anything you need, but we have a fair amount of people in the city of Waukegan that don't seem to respect their neighbors. They don't respect people they come across in public and I'm personally tired of putting up with it. Pants down, whatever it is, loud, profane voices on telephones, please, would you not, would you refrain from doing that? I usually get an F you from people. Please, would you not litter on the ground? F you. Who the F do you think you are? And I try to be polite to people. I don't know what else to do. I have to carry a knife for crying out loud. Good people come after me and want to trade punches. I'm too old to do that. Never was a fighter anyway, but the knife is pretty effective. But I would ask, if you want to afford the cost, get yourself a police scanner. That'll let you know exactly what's going on in this community and the tough job that our policemen and women, what they have to do every day. They get battered by some of these people, blindsided by some of these people. We get sued, oh, they're not polite. I show up on police calls in the Fourth Ward and I listen very carefully to how these people treat our police officers and I can tell you, they're no angels. Loud voices, profanity. The call either comes from their own home because they're battering someone in there or their neighbors are tired of listening to it. You know, we need to put up a little peer pressure here. I wish some of the judges would be a little more strict with some of the people that appear before them. That's another problem. State case law, we don't arrest for disorderly conduct. You're out in New Hampshire, you go over the two-minute limit at a school board meeting, you get arrested for disorderly conduct. Not in the state of Illinois. You can swear right in an officer's face, go right up to that line, a veiled threat is acceptable. You can't directly threaten them or you will get arrested. But that's what our policemen and women have to put up with every day. And they get hurt, hit in the side of the head with a wrench, club. Who do they go to to sue? Hard to restrain some of these folks. So, let's give our police department the respect that they deserve. But I... But I, I, I wish they would heed my advice. They, only they can save themselves. The state legislature, not going to happen. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about yard waste tonight. An issue that I have going on in my ward, I'm not sure if anyone else is having the same issue. But I have residents that have yard waste bags out and they do have stickers on them, but they're not being picked up when they should be picked up. They're left on the curb for maybe two weeks, then it rains, then the bags are burst it open, then the remains are out on the curb again. So I've contacted Tom. He's supposed to be speaking with advanced disposal this week. And, excuse me, and I'm writing my ward to see, to make sure that the resident has tags, stickers on their yard waste bags. But I would too encourage the resident to make sure that that yard waste sticker is visible. Because I have gone to some doors to make sure the resident is aware of the sticker procedure. And then I see them on the backside or under the bag. So the driver may not be able to see them, but they are on the bag. But to have them sit there, though some of them are visible, and have them sit there for two weeks is not acceptable. And regarding the tax increase, sales tax increase, I thank Alderman Valco for coming up with a little better solution. It's hard to vote on an increase, but to see the infrastructure lacking in the city, we have to do something to address the situation that's going on with our sewer systems. In my ward in particular, I've seen it, maybe some of my streets go unfixed for several years, getting patched. Maybe half of the block being patched, not the other half. So I think if the resident can see that where their tax dollars are going, it makes a little less of a hard impact on them. So that's why my vote was aye tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Alderman Cunningham, I want to thank you for bringing up the dress code that some people should have and the problem it presents. It's really discouraging to see someone walking down the street with their pants half hanging off their butt. I did stop the other day to, I thought the guy had a problem because he was walking pretty slowly. You ever seen a baby walk? And they kind of go like this, like they got poop in their pants. So I thought, I thought maybe the poor lad had poop in his pants. I stopped and said, man, do you need a ride home to change your pants? What's the matter with you? I got yelled at for trying to help the poor guy out. Well, maybe their parents ought to get a better look at him. My kid looked like that, he would need to be holding his pants up because he'd need some padding back there. Okay, new water bill? Gee, it kind of looks nice. I like that you can put a message in there, but it's not quite what I want yet. Because if I use so many gallons of water, I know somewhere in the ordinance, if we conserve and don't use too much, we get a better price. Am I right? I think I'm, I'm right. So I'd like to see that water bill say, the first so many gallons, you get this rate. After that, we increase it. Ideas to conserve water. I'd like to see that included in, in my bill. But then I worried about this new beautiful water bill that came in. Beautiful colors, it looked so nice. And I ran to Tina real quick. I said, Tina, what are you doing? Are you paying more money for this? And guess what? She's paying less. She, she got a good deal for us. So we're actually paying less for our water bills that are being printed now than what before. Next thing I want to talk about was vehicle stickers. We have a problem. As I drive through my ward, I see a lot of cars that don't have vehicle stickers. And when does the enforcement start, Your Honor?
Use first, right? Use first.
Can they still get them here at the city hall?
Yes, they may.
They got to pay a penalty again?
Yes.
It's double now. And then if they get a ticket for not having one, it's going to be a double for the vehicle stick and another fine. So they get so far behind, they better hurry and get it. Okay, yard waste? Wow, you know, I guess Conken and I, we didn't like the yard pick up. It's been difficult to implement. I know we tried, but so many people still haven't gotten a message. My code guy myself would go around telling people, I just hate to take a service away that made us a step above some other communities. And the price that we're paying to remove the bag is much more than some other communities are paying, I believe. And I would encourage some people to start a compost pile. Compost, you can recycle those grass pigments back in the soil and dig them in. The library building, the old library building. History lesson, here we go again. At one time, we had money set aside, we were going to knock it down. Then Professor Munn came and he wanted to save the library. And we had some rummage sales, making nickels and dimes, trying to save it. It still sits there. Then they wanted, we had forty thousand dollars at one time, put aside to knock it down and take it away. And where that money went, I, I don't know, Your Honor, but I would agree. It's, it's a building that really, we have a new library. Not like we don't have one. We built a new library. And sometimes the building's usefulness, yeah, it's a Carnegie library. Well, we've extended it, a beautiful, much better library than we had before. It's, it's time to go. Then what else? Oh, at one time in the library building, we're going to have a restaurant there. That kept it going for a while. Then we were going to make it a tourism office so people could come in there and we could help them on their, their retreats around Waukegan. And that never went, so I, I think it's time for it to go. I really do. I don't think it's using any useful service anymore. Excuse me?
Second motion.
Oh, you second that? Okay, thank you. I should have checked with you. That's in your ward?
No.
Beedling's ward. I should have checked with him. I'm sorry. What else have I got here? I write things down now. Well, that's it, Your Honor. That's it. And this evening, yes, I had to bite my tongue, probably one of the hardest votes I took down here, raising the sales tax a quarter percent. But I do believe it was the right thing to do at this time. We have to do something in our road structure. But I'm not against a bond. I tell you why. We spend a lot of money all at once on a road and then all the roads go bad at the same time. We're better off having a systematic program. We do a few here, the next year a few, and few, so they're not all crashing in on us at the same time. And that worries about me. When you guys start talking about a forty million dollar road program, do it all at once, you're making a big mistake. We can patch them for a while and get by. Patches work pretty good. Did when I was a kid on my trousers. And I didn't have to have all new trousers. Put a patch on, they last a little longer. Okay, that's it, Your Honor, but thank you for letting me come. Thank you. Audience time, Jane Ferry.
Jane Ferry, 531 Leaf Avenue, and Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. First, I want to thank the Alderman and of course the mayor for attending lunch with the mayor. It was a lot of fun and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from it. A couple of things that are going on this week are the Bully Project is going to be at the Genesee Theater on Wednesday. And all the money goes to the Bully Project. If you've ever been bullied at school, if you're at school currently and you see kids being bullied, if you're a parent, this is something that you want to go to. The donation suggestion is five dollars. And again, it's at the Genesee Theater on Wednesday. The other thing to get involved with is, the Park District is asking for your input. This is your chance to work with the Park District on their master plan that's coming up. They have three more meetings. They've, they've had two already. The two of the meetings are on Wednesday as well at the Belvedere Rec Center. And the last meeting is on Thursday at Bonnybrook Golf Course. You can go to any of the meetings, invite all your constituents. They're the people who are using the park. They're our parks. So let's have some input in it. And then finally, the Memorial Day Parade is Monday, the 26th. It kicks off at 10:30. There's a parade down Genesee Street, up Washington Street, and it ends at Veterans Plaza with a ceremony. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Stevenson, 801 McAllister. Chris, is that, is he not, he's not, okay. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks for 09 Oak Street. First and foremost, I'd like to extend our appreciations to Chief Farrell of the Waukegan Police Department, as well as Mr. Paget with the civil service for meeting with us regarding potential job opportunities coming up in the fire department. So we appreciate that. We also appreciate the, we also appreciate the tour of the fire department. All the years I've lived here, I've never had an invite to tour the fire department, so we appreciate that. Also, last but not least, I want to clarify our position on the stand your ground law and any other law of hypocrisy. And if I could just share that with you. And the reason that I think it's important that the community be educated on such. Listen, I just want to share this with you.
He choked me. He pushed me forcefully into the tub. He pushed me so hard into the closet that I hit my head against the wall and I kind of passed out for a second. He managed to get the door open. And that's when he strangled me. He put his, his hands around my neck. I thought that I was going to have to protect myself. I-
Were you thinking you might have to shoot him?
Yeah, I did. If it, if it came to that. He saw my weapon at my side. And when he saw it, he was even more upset. And that's when he threatened to kill me.
Okay, I can stop that right there. If any of you all would like to conduct your own research on this. The young lady's name, Melissa Alexander. Having the stand your ground law did not work for her. And what we do not like about this law and any other law that presents hypocrisy, as Dr. Moore and Luther King tell us, any law that's unfair on its face is no law at all. So when we hear people who put out innuendos to try to justify this type of hypocrisy, it's either they are ignorant of the facts, attempting to extort the facts, or just have a low to no IQ regarding facts altogether. So I just want to close on that note because-
That's three minutes.
Say it again?
That's three minutes.
Okay, so look this law up, you all, and understand that this is not good for anybody. Stand your ground is not good at all. Thank you for your time and for your attention.
Annabelle Martinez?
How you doing? My name is Annabelle Martinez of 2318 Glen Flora. Not really a public speaker, so if you could be patient, we got a little nerve. But basically, I'm here because I've, I've got a home on 2318 Glen Flora. I've had a ton of issues, as well as my neighbors, with a ton of sewage backup that's continuously, every time it rains hard, every time you get a rainstorm, there's always some type of sewage backing up out of the toilet, out of the drains. And I'm disgusted with it. I mean, there's got to be something that can be done. I've been there for four and a half years. Just every time, I mean, it's going to rain tonight and am I going to get flooded? I mean, I'm worried about it. And my neighbor told me he had condoms coming out of his drain hole and cigarette butts. And not to mention the thick sludge that we have to pick up around the drywall. It's disgusting. I have my four-year-old daughter. He's got a two-year-old son. We've got our kids to worry about. It's not just myself. It's not just people on our block. It's got to be other people around there. It's got to be something that can be done. It's disgusting. And I'm tired of it. I don't know what else I could do other than speak about it and hopefully something that can get done. Four and a half years, been flooded about ten times, inches of water, thick sludge. And it's ruining my home to the point where it's not, the property values are dropping. I'm not, I can't enjoy my home the way I want to enjoy my home. I'm paying for a property and I can't enjoy it. You know, I'm a hard, working man. I live for my family and I can't come home and enjoy my basement because it's nasty, it's disgusting. It's just asking for some help, something that can be done, some guidance from any one of you, you know. Condoms coming out of the sewage backup flow, out of the toilet, out of the drain. You guys don't want your kids living like that. My kid shouldn't have to suffer. His kid. We've all got children, you know. It's just something that hopefully can get done. So I don't really have much more to say other than that, that hopefully we can move forward and get something-
Mr. Martinez, if you'll give me your phone number, I will have our Public Works Director contact you.
Okay, I've had that done also. His case come out. I mean, that's a separate issue. You know, I've been told what to do. I've had plumbers come. I've had them do the camera. I've had it augured out through the drain that goes all the way to the street. I've had that done. Sewerage backup. I don't really know what else, you know, that can be done.
What's your address, sir?
2318-
I've got it here.
2318, well, I, the reason I say that is, this last heavy rain, I had some people by Glenwood School, again, that they had some problems in their basement too. And that, sir, that is the, the worst thing that can happen to somebody is to have their basement flood. That's the worst. I had a small issue in a house I lived in once, and I don't wish that on anybody. That, my feel for you, that is the absolute worst thing in the world to have your basement flood. The worst.
And it's understandable that happens, you know, when it rains heavily, but this over and over is constant issues, you know. And, and everything out from my piping to the street piping has been cleared. My piping is perfectly fine. I've had multiple plumbers come check it out. It's not, it's not an issue.
Sir, your three minutes is up, but I, I just talked to Alderman Tempest. He's aware of the issue there. We will talk to Tom Haggery tomorrow.
All right.
He's, it's happened before, not only to you, but other residents of that area. And Alderman Tempest knows what the problem is. So we'll address it.
All right.
Okay, sir, thank you. Benjamin, 2314.
Good evening. I'm Annabelle's next-door neighbor, you know, suffering the same issues as him. You know, spared you guys here, hearing about it, you know, for much longer. But, you know, rest of the people on our block I know are, are dealing with it too. I see people that come in with vans, you know, for like cleanup after like sewage and waste that removal, like that type of stuff. Like everything in the basement is getting covered in this stuff when it's backing up out of our drains, out of our toilets. And, you know, like he said, you know, waste. And my basement had cigarette butts and condoms in it, like, you know, I don't smoke. So that's, I know that stuff is not mine. It's, you know, trash and waste that's coming up from the cities like storm drains and their sewage drainage. And it's, it's another thing, I've been there, you know, around the same amount of time as my neighbor and dealing with it. Every time it rains hard or, you know, two inches of rain in a few hours and wondering if, you know, I'm going to go home to a couple feet of sewage. Is my furnace going to work? Right now, you know, after May 12th, I, you know, I have no heat. My furnace isn't working. It's an old furnace, it's thirty-five years old. I can't really make a claim to my insurance company and put a new furnace down there just to vibrate, knowing that the next time it rains hard, I'll be getting a few more feet of sewage. It's just a, you know, hard thing to deal with, being a homeowner and paying property taxes and, and putting money into my home where not being able to, like my neighbor said, enjoy your home properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
Ron Osterlein, City of Waukegan, Chamber of Commerce, 674 Malmon Avenue. Thanks for this few minutes here. I just wanted to let you know about a couple events we have coming up. Wednesday, we have a quarterly wake-up with Waukegan at the Bonnybrook Banquet Hall. And it's a, it's the usual networking. There's a breakfast at 7:30 in the morning. And it's also, it's- it's also, it's on goal-setting. So, yeah. And then on June 12th, we have our eighth annual golf outing at the Glen Flora Country Club, and that's start, 12:30 shotgun, and that'll be all day, lots of, lots of great events, and we're looking for participants and volunteers and donations for that event. The same night, that's the second Thursday of the, of the month, we usually have our business after-hours, and we're actually gonna join that together and have our business after-hours that evening as well, starting at 5 o'clock at Glen Flora. So thanks, thanks for all your support in the past, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
Well, I was reminded by Corporation Council that this is my first meeting of my second year in office, and I'd like to say, it's been an interesting year. I'd like to thank the Aldermen for their support, for their commitment, for their dedication, and the staff of the city have been wonderful to me in the first year. We have certainly had our differences, but no one in this city has ever treated one another without the respect and dignity they so rightfully deserve. I look forward to an interesting second year. I happened to go through my accomplishments in the first year, and I was amazed how many things we actually did together. And let me make it perfectly clear to all of you sitting here, it wasn't me, it was us who made this city work the first year. And to the Aldermen sitting here, thank you so much for putting up with me for the first year. Most of adjourned by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May.
Oh, oh, Mayor, Mayor, before you go.
Okay.
We had a seventieth birthday just passed, let's, let's all do a happy birthday for the Doc.
Oh, Doc's Doc.
That's right. Happy birthday, happy little birthday, Doc.
Happy birthday, Doc.
Seventy years young. Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to get out.
Okay, most adjourned? Morning, many adjourned, thank you.